Aloha, kakahiaka, kakako. Everyone, good morning. We're convening the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees meeting here on the island of Maui. Today is Thursday, June 5th, 2025. The time now is 9 o'clock in the morning, and we're coming to you from the campus of the University of Hawaii Maui Campus here in the Pa'ina Building on the island of Maui here in Kahului. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Board Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Justia Huana is excused, trustee Akaka.
Eo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kakako.
Trustee Alapa.
Present.
Trustee Galutaria.
Eo.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aloha.
Trustee Suzai is excused, trustee Wahe'e is excused, Chair Kahele.
Present.
We have six trustees present. You have quorum.
Okay, great. We'd like to welcome our Maui community to our Board of Trustees meeting this morning. Also, I want to mahalo the University of Hawaii here at Maui College. It's Chancellor Louis Hokuana for the opportunity again to host the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and our board and community meeting last night. We sincerely appreciate your generosity and the longstanding relationship that Oha has had with this campus. This meeting can be viewed via livestream on Oha's website at www.oha.org/livestream. We'd like to now move to introductions, and I'd like to please ask each trustee to briefly introduce yourself and your staff at this time. I will start with our trustee from Oahu, Kalea Hikina Akaka.
Mahalo. Aloha no, aloha pumehana, and aloha kakahiaka. I'm Kalea Kaka, and I'm honored to serve as the Oha Oahu trustee. And joining me today is my kukua Nathan Takiuachi, as well as my ohana. And I want to mahalo you all for your attendance today and for those that joined us last night as well, as it helps us stay on the needs and concerns of what is working and what could use some improvement, how we can best collaborate together within our community. But I want to mahalo all those that made today and yesterday possible. And just say, I'm looking forward to seeing what can come of what was discussed yesterday and last night, and then what is going to be discussed today and seeing how we can go forward on this actively. Mahalo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai, aloha kakahiaka. Just so wonderful to be with all of you here on Maui, and thank you for coming. I'm Kele Akinah, trustee at large, and really learned a lot last night as many members of the community shared some deep concerns. We're here to listen and we're here to serve. Aloha. Oh, by the way, I'm also here today with one of my team members, Karina Lee.
Mahalo trustee Akina. Trustee Galutaria.
Aloha, aloha mai kakako, everybody. Happy to be here on the island to join you in our dialogue discussion, learning more about Maui directly on Maui. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our staff. Leanne Durant has joined me. She's in our office. And we chair the Beneficiary Advisory and Empowerment Committee. Aloha.
Mahalo, trustee Alapa.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. I'd like to take this time to introduce my staff. Today with me is my secretary, Summer Source. And thank you so much, Summer, for driving me around and picking me up and taking me to the airport. Mahalo, Summer. I am the proud representative of the island of Molokai and Lenaii and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. Mahalo.
Mahalo. All right, our Chair Emerida, Pulo Lindsay.
Aloha mai kakako. Welcome to all the community members that are here this morning. We had a full house last night, and it was very, very rewarding to hear their concerns. With me on this trip are my aides. We have Kanani Iaya and Pohailani Kialoha. Wave your hands, ladies. Thank you.
Mahalo Chair. And finally, my name is Kalea Kahele, and I represent Hawaii Island on Oha's Board of Trustees and also have the distinct privilege and honor to be the chairperson of the Board of Trustees. So thank you all for coming. My staff is here as well. I'd be remiss. I apologize for not introducing them last night, but I'd like to introduce our Deputy Chief of Staff, Elena Young, and our Board Secretary, Lehuwa Ito Kazu. Okay, I'd like to introduce our kapoana, our CEO Stacy Ferreira. Can you introduce yourself and any administrative staff supporting Oha here this morning?
Mahalo Chair. Aloha kakahiaka, kakako, trustees, and our honored beneficiaries who have joined us this morning. Mahalo. Joining us today from the administration, we have Kehau Puu, COO. Mahalo. Rice Campbell, Operations Manager. Daniel Santos, IT Systems Engineer. Roy Newton, our Beneficiary Services Agent here on Maui, holding it down. Jason Lee is our Multimedia Designer. And Kelly Swallow, our Communication Strategist. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo kapuana. Our first item on the agenda is going to be the status of Oha activities. This is where our CEO will give her Maui Island Community Report and update on any Oha's activities, as well as an update on recent travel that she took to Aotearoa that focused on successful indigenous models of decolonization. So kapuana, direct.
Mahalo Chair. For those of you that are joining us this morning in person, Uncle Roy had a bunch of different documents for you to pick up as you entered. And one of those documents is our Island Community Report, the executive summary. And I'm just going to extract one part of that. But please, if you don't have it, make sure you take it with you because there's a lot of great information about the many things that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is doing for Maui Nui. And I think you'll be quite surprised at the amount of advocacy, compliance work, grant funding that we are doing and really putting resources out into the community to address the many concerns and issues that our Kanaka Oevi are living with here in Maui. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about our Oha funding activities for Maui. Oha dispersed nearly $6 million in funding to 13 grantees providing services on Maui that range from supporting educational services for At Promise Youth and Ohana, funding foraina-based Olelo Hawaii programming in Maui Komohana, to supporting the establishment of a culturally relevant Native Hawaiian owner-builder program for Native Hawaiians on Hawaiian homelands, and to supporting vocational career pathways for Native Hawaiian youth. Of the 13 Oha grantees servicing Maui beneficiaries, four are exclusive to Maui. So in breaking down that $6 million, four of the 13 grantees, again, just focused on Maui, is about $736,000. And the balance of that is to the other grantees who are providing not just services to Maui, but across the pa'aina. So Oha, our services, our programs run deep, and they also run very wide. Oha offers a variety of personal and business loans designed to support the financial well-being of Native Hawaiians. These loans can be used for purposes such as consolidating debt, covering educational expenses, making home improvements, or addressing personal emergencies. And Oha has dispersed $1.4 million in loan funds to 45 borrowers here on Maui through our Native Hawaiian revolving loan fund. And active loans include 10 home improvement loans, 25 debt consolidation loans, and 10 business loans. So again, the reach with our funding, with our programs, and support is extremely wide. At this time, Chair, if we want to move on to my travel report?
Sure.
First off, I just want to mahalo the Chair and the trustees for allowing me to step away from my duties as kapuana for two weeks. As Omidir Fellow, I had an opportunity to have all expenses paid trip by the Omidir Foundation to embark upon an impact experience. And when I was crafting my impact experience, I wanted to do it to do something that not just was going to impact Hawaii, but more importantly, impact our Hawaiian communities. And so when I looked at what opportunities that I could, you know, potentially embark upon, I wanted to even more closely align my experience with the work here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And so I want to tee it up, I want to tee up my project and the findings by just grounding us in Chapter 10H-2. So this is one of our Hawaii revised statute mandates. This is kulianna that we at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs have, and this is probably one that's lesser known. Most often, we talk about Chapter 10, which is bettering the conditions of Native Hawaiians, but we also have 10H-2, and this is equally important. And so the purpose, as stated in law, is that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is to provide for and to implement the recognition of the Native Hawaiian people by means and methods that will facilitate their self-governance, including the establishment of entities that relate or affect ownership, possession, or use of lands by the Native Hawaiian people and by further promoting their culture, heritage, entitlements, health, education, and welfare. Big kulianna. And certainly, an opportunity for us to think about, imagine, and potentially execute on what an expanded version of self-governance may look like as the Office of Hawaiian Affairs facilitating such efforts. So I had an opportunity to travel to both Palau and Aotearoa, and my intent was to look at our cousins in Micronesia in Palau and in Polynesia in Aotearoa to see how they are implementing and living air. And what does self-governance, what does an indigenous self-governance model look like in parallel with Western governance constructs? And I will share with you, I was pleasantly surprised that both are alive and well, and that's not to say that there aren't challenges. There will always be challenges as the Western constructs will always be looking to either limit or diminish native cultural practices and rights. But I think that both of those countries do provide excellent examples of what potential expanded self-governance could look like for Kanaka Oevi here in our own homeland. So if we could go to the next slide. So when I embarked upon my research, the core tenets that I proceeded with was, first, that there has already been acknowledgement, and there is truth and reconciliation that need to be recognized. So in 1993, the U.S. Apology Resolution, Public Law 103-150, President Clinton apologized for the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian monarchy and acknowledged that Native Hawaiians never gave up their sovereignty. And HRS Chapter 10H recognizes that Native Hawaiians are the indigenous people of Hawaii. Essentially, Hawaii cannot heal until Hawaiians do, and true equity requires reconciliation with the first people of these islands. Two, collective flourishing and indispensability. When Hawaiians thrive, all in Hawaii thrive, and there is no Hawaii without Hawaiians. And in 2022, it was a big marker for the Hawaiian community because we saw more Native Hawaiians on the U.S. continent than we did here in Hawaii. Next slide. So as I mentioned, I was able to reach out to connections that I had in both Palau and Aotearoa. And I was very fortunate that the individuals were both a part of the government structures in Palau and Aotearoa, and they were very gracious in setting up various meetings for me to talk with the Western government leaders, but more importantly, the indigenous leaders of those places. Next slide. So what does it look like when you have indigenous and Western governance models running in parallel? And so I will share with you that in Palau and Aotearoa, this does exist. And so when you look at the graphic that I have here on the left, this is actually an illustration or an articulation of how an indigenous structure looks like in Aotearoa that potentially we in Hawaii could consider. This looks hierarchical in nature, just the way that it's laid out, but it truly is not. The Kingitanga is basically a movement within Aotearoa that basically amplifies and uplifts the monarchy there, the royal family. And, you know, King Tu Hitiya passed away recently, and his daughter ascended to the throne, if you will, Queeni Navaihona Itepol. And I will tell you that she, unlike her father, who was only able to bring into the Kingitanga 81 of the various Maori Iwi, the new queenie has brought in 110. All 110 Iwi are now loyal to the Kingitanga. And that is huge. And why that is huge is because she serves as the cultural and spiritual leader of the Maori. And so when there is a call upon any type of infringement or diminishing of indigenous rights, she has the gravitas. She may not have the actual inherent political power in the Crown's parliament, but she has the gravitas of being the indigenous leader of the Maori people. And that was recognized, and that was demonstrated just very recently when the Treaty of Waitangi was being threatened in the Crown's parliament. And she was able to galvanize over 40,000 Maori to march from the north of Aotearoa all the way down to Parliament to have them stop their infringing upon Maori rights. And I offer this up as a consideration of our board to think about what does our monarchy in a 21st century context look like? We know that the Kuananakoa ohana, as we experienced through FestPAC and through the Talanoas, that the Kuananakoa ohana already is recognized as, you know, a royal family here in Hawaii. And, you know, it was Prince David Kuananakoa who signed onto basically the agreement that we came up with during FestPAC for the leaders of Ma'ani Nui Akeha to come together as a political bloc to talk about the issues and to take action on the issues and the concerns across the Pacific. So there has been an acknowledgement by our cousins already regarding the Kuananakoa ohana. And I wonder, and I put out there for consideration, that's how does Oha help to amplify and uplift our royal families? How might they serve as catalysts and families that can help to coalesce our Hawaiian people? Also, within this indigenous structure, they have an indigenous parliament. And so this parliament runs again in parallel with the Crown's parliament. And the way that it's structured is that they have representatives from the 110 Iwi. And so they have multiple representatives that basically speak on behalf of each Iwi's concerns, their issues, and they bring that forward to a executive board. And so you can see that that board, well, it doesn't say it here, but it's basically made up of 11 members. And those 11 members are selected by the 110 Iwi that are represented in their tribal parliament. And then one member of that executive group is assigned by the Kingitanga. So, and I don't want to butcher the name, but it's the Te Wakaki Tenga, O Waikato. So that's that executive board. That executive board interfaces with the Te Arataura. Okay, that governing body, Te Arataura, would be our comparable Oha board. And so when you look at the slide, I made that arrow that basically connects their executive board to what our executive board would be. So just to show that there are comparables. So we wouldn't be starting from scratch and trying to replicate what's already being done in Aotearoa. I will tell you that the leaders that I was able to visit were from Waikato Ta'enui. Waikato Ta'enui is one of the largest Iwi, one of the most powerful Iwi, and one of the most financially and economically rich Iwi in Aotearoa. And the reason for that is that they have Auckland and Hamilton in their Iwi. So Waikato Ta'enui, they basically represent over 41% of the GDP that is generated for all of New Zealand. So when we talk about sovereignty, political sovereignty really comes from having economic sovereignty. And the reason that, and I have this arrow that goes across the slide to the Crown governance structure, is because Waikato Ta'enui is a force to be reckoned with in Aotearoa. The Crown listens to the government officials, the tribal officials from Waikato Ta'enui because they have economic sovereignty. That economic sovereignty creates that political sovereignty. Within Waikato Ta'enui, they have a very similar structure to Oha, where they do programs and services for the betterment of their people. And then they also have a separate Ta'enui group holdings. So they actually separate out their real estate and their investment portfolio. So they're two separate entities, but again, they're structured very similar to Oha. So what is Oha's opportunity? Well, we have an opportunity here to champion and lead the establishment of a dual governance model in Hawaii, and some potential next steps for consideration may to revisit and refresh the Hawaiian Constitution. And I'm hoping that we would entertain an MOA with Waikato Ta'enui Iwi and the Te Arataura so that we may work more closely with them because, again, we are modeled almost exactly in the same fashion as they are. They are a $2 billion trust. When they settled with the Crown, they settled for $150 million. They turned that $150 million settlement into $2 billion. They know what they're doing. And so my hope is that we'll be able to create some kind of partnership with them. Tuku Morgan is the Chair. He would be comparable to Chair Kahele. He will be visiting Hawaii in July. My hope is that we would be able to meet with him and, again, establish a relationship with them. Next slide, please. So here, I wanted to talk a little bit about how localized government informs both state and national governance. Oh, one back, please. Yep. So for an example, I wanted to illustrate that in Palau, they're broken up into what they call 16 states. In Aotearoa, they're broken up into 110 Iwi. When they, you may hear them talk about Iwi, they may interchange that with nations or tribes, but they're talking about the same things. In Hawaii, what might that look like? It could be 37 moku. So in Palau and Aotearoa, they have local councils and Iwi that guide local and national policy. At this point, our current structure is Oha helps to craft and guide local and national policy. But what might it look like if we had more localized engagement helping to inform policy both at the local and national level? So the opportunity here for Oha would be to potentially support and facilitate the establishment of regional governance structures that work together with Oha for Kalahui Hawaii in partnership and cogovernance with the state and federal government. Some potential next steps might be to create a temporary opuni council to establish membership of a pa'aina governing board with regional councils for each moku and the reemergence and support of the Hawaiian monarchy, consult and partners with other island nations. Next slide. Because I had so many meetings in both nations, and the conversations were hours long, when I would go back to my room in the evening to transcribe my notes, it was quite overwhelming because there were so many amazing things that were shared by the leaders of both nations. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to extract topics or themes that resonated with both nations. So that's what I'm bringing forward today. So the two themes that I just talked about, but here was a third. In Palau, they have bai, and in Aotearoa, they have marai. And these are localized governance meeting spaces. In Kahiko times here in Hawaii, we had heil. We wouldn't meet on a heil in present daytime. So what would that look like if we were to follow, along with our cousins, to not just have a governance structure, but to actually embed it with actual structures that help to codify in a very structural way in our communities the same types of meeting spaces so that governance can happen in a real and authentic way in community? So I gave some examples of what that looks like in Palau. So they have a very beautiful bai in Arai State. In Waikato Ta'enui, what I'm sharing with you is actually the queenies' marai. So what does that look like in Hawaii? We actually have a couple of spaces. So there is a Halehalavai in Holu'aloa. But then we also have one up at campus, up at Kamameha Schools, called Kaiva Kilau Moku. And both are beautiful spaces in which community is invited to come and gather. But certainly, these kinds of spaces could serve as localized governance meeting spaces. These spaces are also used for community celebrations, gatherings. And so the opportunity for Oha to consider would to invest in not just spaces for these, not just the facility, but also the aina in which these facilities would be constructed. So some potential next steps would be to establish Halehalavai, meeting houses, council houses in each moku, communal spaces for meetings, discussions, and consensus building in each moku regarding needs, issues, and opportunities. One of the interesting things that was pointed out, so in Palau, they have two queens. They have one queen that governs, and I'm talking in an indigenous kind of governance way, the north, and another queen that governs from central to south. And they said when they meet in their bai, they don't do Western votes. It's not majority rules. They sit there and they work through consensus. And so they just keep talking and talking until they get agreement by all. So I think that was pretty exceptional in terms of governance and ensuring that everybody's voices are heard. Next slide, please. So one of the other themes was voting and how we as indigenous people are powerful political bloc and create tremendous amount of influence to ensure that our traditional practices and rights are fortified and basically protected and persist into the future. And, you know, trustee Galutaria, you talk about this continuously. And I know that you continue to encourage not just the board, but administration to continuously look at how do we, you know, garner and fortify our own political influence. And in Aotearoa, they do this through an indigenous electorate, and they basically amplify the voice of the people. And as I mentioned early in the presentation, that the queen of the Maori does this in the most phenomenal way. And they have basically utilized their communications, specifically their social media, to bring their political platform to the world. And they have been able to really electrify and elevate the Maori voice. So the opportunity that we have is to both elevate stories of Hawaiian civic leadership, both past, present, and future. We need to engage political participation of our people. And again, you know, looking at historically, what did Hawaii do in terms of self-governance? Civic engagement is going to be something that we've already put into our budget because we recognize the importance of it, doing that through our Aha Opio program and through our DC Fellowship program. And we will do this to raise the next generation of Oevi leaders. Some potential next steps for consideration would to convene a Native Hawaiian Voting Summit, amplify work of the Native Hawaiian civic clubs, catalyze a Hawaiian political agenda focused on core tenants of Eia, Aina, Vai, Olalaho Vai, traditional and customary practices, and activate coordinated agendas with Native Hawaiian Legislative Caucus, city councils, our Codel, our civic clubs, and our homestead associations. And lastly, Aina and Olalaho Vai is sovereignty. In Palau and Aotearoa, they have fought and they continue to fight for the return of their lands. In Palau, they were colonized first by the Germans, then by the Japanese. And it has been decades of fighting to get the return of their lands from the Japanese. In Aotearoa, there are numerous iwi that are in negotiations with the Crown to settle, not just for monetary compensation, but also to get the returns of their tribal lands. As I mentioned, in Waikato Tainui, they have been very successful of not just getting their tribal lands back, but through the monetary settlement that they got, they are buying their lands back. And that has created their economic sovereignty. When you walk out of the Auckland Airport, literally when you walk out of customs, right across the street are two five-star Diamond Hotels that are owned by Waikato Tainui. And it is the most incredible feat that they have accomplished in terms of creating economic abundance for their iwi. They own hotels, they own inland shipping ports, they own transportation lines, they own retail shopping centers, the list goes on. But all of that is possible because they have Aina, not just for economic stability, but also for permanence of their people. They have lots of leasehold lands, well, kalamai, they have lands which they leasehold, which produce billions in revenues for their iwi. And they also have made it a major effort to amplify Te Reo Maori. Similar to us in Hawaii, we actually took their model and we created Aha Puna Naleo here. And so OHA has done an amazing job. We put six million dollars in our budget annually to support our Native Hawaiian-focused charter schools, to ensure that our language survives through our education system. But there's always opportunity to do more. So what can OHA do? Some potential is to continue to work with the governor and the mayors on our Aina transfers, our Kingdom and Crown government lands through our PLT payments to continue that fight, to also, not just to get our payments, but also to include Aina returns and reclamations. And then also considering purchasing our Aina back. If they're not gonna, if we're gonna have to continue to fight for it, let's purchase it. Unrestricted access to Hawaiian language and culture, amplifying Olalaho Vai learning and training across the Paiaina. So instead of having to pay to come to a university or to private classes, we make that free and accessible to all across the Paiaina, as well as on the continent. Next steps potentially could be, well, we know this is for sure, an audit of the Kingdom, Crown, and government lands for an accurate land inventory, conducting economic market studies for revenue generation, generating a list of strategic lands and infrastructure that we might want to pursue, provide free Olalaho Vai instruction for Ohana, normalizing use of Olalaho Vai, providing funding support to expand Aha Puna Naleo, our Native Hawaiian-focused charter schools, and our Kaipuni schools. And in short, I just wanna, although they're not here and they may never hear this presentation, I have extended this to them directly, that is with deep gratitude to the leaders of Palau and to Aotearoa for their generous ike, Loko Maikai, and Aloha, and the kokua in guiding the revival of Hawaiian self-governance and a path towards reconciliation. They have made themselves available to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs that if we would so choose to reach out to them, they are happy to work with us in being thought partners in how we might want to pursue any of these efforts. Mahalo, trustees.
Aloha, Nui Loa Kapo Hana. Our next item is action item BF twenty-five thirty-six, approval of OHA funding for a Hoa Koakoa Lahui event sponsorship to the festivals of Aloha for the twenty-twenty-five Na Kamehameha commemorative Pa'ou parade and Ho'olalea event on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Lehuwa, do you have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, I have Daryl coming up to the front.
Aloha, Daryl. Aloha and good morning, trustees. Thank you so much for coming to Maui, spending your time here with all of us. I want to commend the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for their rehabilitation of their grants program. For many years, I want to say over ten years, I haven't applied just because of the way that it was structured and the way that it was formulated. It was very difficult, I think, to be awarded and navigate that. And this year, you know, experiencing all of that, it was very easy. I highly recommend to our Lahui to pursue these opportunities now, because it's so much more easier, you know, and so much more friendlier, I think, to applicants. So mahalo again for making that more accessible and amazing. We're looking forward to our wonderful Kamehameha celebrations here on Maui. Thanks to you folks. I'm very, very grateful, and all of Maui should be very grateful to all of you. So mahalo again for your support of our cultural events here on Maui.
Mahalo, Daryl. All right, I'd like to call upon our Budget and Finance Chair, Trustee Luana Alapa, to read the motion.
Mahalo. Your committee on Budget and Finance, having met on April thirty, twenty-twenty-five, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motions to the Board of Trustees. Approval of action item BF twenty-five dash thirty-six, action item, approval of OHA funding for the Hoa Koakoa Lahui event sponsorship to festivals of Aloha for the twenty-twenty-five Na Kamehameha commemorative Pa'ou parade and Ho'olalea event on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
All right, we have a second from Trustee Akaka. Trustees, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. What vote, Lehuwa?
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Suzie is excused. Trustee Waihe is excused. Chair Kahele?
Aye.
We have six yes votes.
Okay, motion is adopted. All right, moving on now to communities and community concerns and celebrations. Lehuwa, do we have anyone signed up for community concerns and celebrations?
Yes, our first speaker is Claire Apana.
Okay, Claire Akana. Apana, sorry. Claire's not here. We can move on to the next one.
Okay, our next speaker is Maria.
Is this Claire? Oh, she's out there. All right, we'll bring up Maria. Is Maria here? Okay, aloha, Maria.
I know we only allotted five minutes each, so my wife and I both filled out the paper, because mine is a little over five minutes. Is it all right?
Go for it, yeah. Okay, aloha, Kako.
Aloha.
Malama Kakanilua Incorporated is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) dedicated to the protection, preservation, and restoration of our iwi kupuna, our ancestral bones. I wrote something in Hawaiian. Can anybody translate for me? Mahalo. Yeah. Ualoheao inaleo o na kupuna.
I heard the voices of the kupuna.
Kahea lakou ia. No. Can you translate?
Uh, hiki. Uh, they called upon me.
Ehoi oi kaaina. Kaaina o kou kupuna.
Return to the Aina, the land of your ancestors.
Ehoi oi kaaina. Kaaina o kealoa a keaku.
Return to the land, the land of your ancestors and the love of Keaku.
Make make ao enana i kou maka.
I want to look at your eyes.
Make make ao e pi akumeoe.
I want to be close or peely with you.
Aike i kou mana?
To see your mana, your spiritual power.
Make make ao e lohe?
I want to hear.
I kou puu vai e kahea ana ia.
Your heart calling to me.
My answer is maanei e yaau ike iala.
Here, here I am today.
Maanei e yaau ike iala. E malama va'ua oei?
Here, here I am today. I will take care of you.
E malama mai oei ia.
You will take care of me.
Maanei e yaau uahiki mai.
Here, here I am. I have arrived.
Wow, should I use this? History of Kakanilua tells us that Kalaniopuu, Kekuhapio, and Kamehameha came from Hawaii Island in seventeen seventy-six and attempted to conquer the island of Maui. Prior to their arrival, Kahakiili, the chief of Maui, heard of their plans and he enlisted the help of warriors from Oahu, Lanai, Molokai to defend Maui. During this battle, over two thousand warriors lost their lives. A battle of this proportion would leave everyone dead, dying, or unable to continue. Kalaniopuu, Kekuhapio, and at that time, a very young man, Kamehameha, and their last two surviving warriors returned to Hawaii Island. When Kalaniopuu landed at Kailua, the people from the shoreline to the uplands were wailing when they heard of their loved ones that were left at the sand hills of Waileku. Kahakiili had no warriors left to pursue Kalaniopuu, and there was no one able to bury the dead. They were left on the sand dunes where the dogs and pigs began to dismember them. Insects, plants, and trees also began to deteriorate our iwi. In due time, the prevailing trade winds blew the sands from Kahului shoreline, kamakani ho eha ili, the wind that hurts the skin, and covered the remaining iwi preserving them in place. Archaeological studies tell us that bones covered in dry sandy soil remain intact for hundreds of years. Such is the case. It is very disrespectful for our iwi to be left unattended and desecrated. During the past administrations, developers convinced lawmakers to approve housing projects, commercial properties, and churches in spite of all the archaeological finds. Also, more than four hundred barges of sand aggregate were sent to the Honolulu Rail Project, where they have experienced extensive problems from the start, including three deaths in twenty-seventeen and two in twenty-nineteen after hitting the cement pillars. I wonder how many iwi kupuna made the long ride to Oahu for the rail project? Although undocumented, there are testimonies of construction workers, equipment operators, truck drivers, laborers, and barge operators who can testify of unexplained happenings that caused them to quit their job. I wonder why? Is this all a coincidence? Is it lawful to desecrate any burial site? Veteran cemetery, Makawal Cemetery, Maui Mimo Cemetery, Punch Bowl Cemetery? Or only Hawaiian burial sites? I wonder how many people were affected physically, mentally, or spiritually for their careless participation in the desecration of our iwi kupuna? How many family members were collateral damage? I wonder why? For the money. If you continue to cover up and ignore the existence of iwi kupuna, you will continue to be cursed. Is that what you want? Malama Kakanilua has continually strived to preserve and protect our iwi kupuna through testimony, court proceedings, demonstrations, and marches from Waikapu to Safeway. Nobody listened. In twenty-eighteen, we produced two documentaries that were viewed on all public TV stations. Finally, on February tenth, twenty-eighteen, front page Maui News printed, "Maui County Suspends Maui Lani Project Grading Permits." The action was pivotal in protecting our iwi kupuna. Don't forget. Kakanilua consists of five hundred acres of land. It is covered with sand, kiava trees, and weeds. There are iwi kupuna scattered everywhere. There are red flags, orange plastic construction fences, and chain link fences surrounding areas that designate iwi kupuna, discovered in prior archaeological digs. Today, deer and wild pigs scavenge the land for whatever vegetation they can find. This attracts illegal hunters who come for meat and others for the trophy of deer racks or pig tusks, leaving carcasses behind to rot. With a concentrated effort to stabilize the shifting sands, remove kiava trees, drive brush, wild pigs, deer, construction materials, and fire hazards, I believe we can make the sand dunes safe and protect our iwi. The sand can be replanted with indigenous plants that used to grow in the area, one of them being the state flower of Hawaii. Ma'oha'hele was able to thrive in the dry sandy soil of Kakanilua. It grew as tall as nine to fifteen feet and just as wide. Ma'oha'hele is currently on the federal government list of endangered species. We have five hundred acres where we can say otherwise. In the Battle of Kakanilua, Kahakiili's warriors would hide behind the Ma'oha'hele. They would also bury themselves in the sand. They were called the Dog Warriors, who communicated by barking like dogs to signal their men that Kalaniopuu's men were caught in the Kahului formation. This was a Lua technique used in battle, like surrounding fish in a net. In this battle, it was one major reason for success. They also had a secret weapon, a ten-pointed spear.
Sir, you have one more minute. Thank you. Mahalo. Claire Apana?
I took ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Wow.
Well, nine minutes and ten seconds. Thank you. We're also happy to take your written testimony, and we can share that with the rest of the trustees. Thank you. Mahalo. Claire? Aloha, Claire.
Good morning, trustees. And this morning, I would just like to kind of recap some of the things that have gone on in the last year. And I so appreciate the report you were having before about Aotearoa and Palau, because I think that we are really far behind in advocacy for our people in this area. In March of this year, Malama Kakanilua was informed that we won our decision in the Intermediate Court of Appeals. And that decision was against the deal in And that decision was against the DLNR. But more important was the finding of the decision, which said that the DLNR needs to keep a closer watch on SHPD and how they are managing the rights of Kanaka Ma'uli. In specific, they were talking about Article twelve, Section seven, which was also, um, brought up in the report that I just saw here. The right to practice our culture and religion, which is protected by our kanavi, the federal laws, and the state constitution. But in this decision, it also said that Malamaka Kanilua had demonstrated that we have property interest in our ivy kupuna. What does that mean? That means that when we come to protect them, we actually have an interest according to the legalities of this state and country. I am really sorry that I'm not sure that OHA, who is a state entity also, has come clearly to recognize this, that we have the right to protect our ivy kupuna as is our cultural or traditional practice and the values of our people. And I hope that you will take this very seriously because as an entity of the state that is saying that you are representing Kanaka Ma'uli, do you actually exert the power and the, um, what is given to us in these laws as they do in A'au Te'arua, say, for instance? Because we hear from you time and time again that, oh, we can't do anything about that. But we see that our little organization worked for four years with really great attorneys who don't give up and who believe so strongly in helping Kanaka Ma'uli. They are not Kanaka. That they stayed with it for four years. Kanilua, Kamano, and I did this whole contested case pro se. We did the questioning, we did the filings, everything pro se because they refused to put this in the right jurisdiction legally. But at the same time, I don't see OHA recognizing how much work we have done in this community that maybe OHA should be doing. And as a matter of fact, I just asked for a letter. And I was finally given an answer after months and months of writing to Ke'halani Puu. And we had a meeting, and then they said that I had to write the letter. And I said, well, can I please speak to your legal team? And they said, no, she's too busy. They're too busy. And so I'm, I'm hoping now that it's really timing because we have gotten this verdict from the intermediate court that actually says DLNR protect the rights of Malamaka Kanilua to protect the ivy kupuna. And we are asking for a letter from OHA, from the, for the Grand Wailea, where numerous violations have occurred. And I am sorry, I just did not feel up to writing a legal document, a legal letter. But perhaps now, board, you might allow me and Malamaka Kanilua to speak to your legal team so that we can write a letter and we can begin to enforce our rights to the traditions that we may practice and have legal support for. So I, I really am hoping that we're walking into a new era and that we will be going towards a different kind of relationship. One where, um, maybe I've always said this and people laugh. Maybe we kupuna have to sign the petition in blood like they did in A'au Te'arua. And maybe then they will listen to us. But before that happens, perhaps OHA could take the reins that this, this was, OHA was actually started for and begin to protect our ivy kupuna for one. I thank you very much, and I hope that you can make a motion so that I can speak to your legal team to write the letter to the Grand Wailea about the memorandum of agreement that was not fulfilled back when the Grand Wailea was being built. And that memorandum of agreement is the only reason that they got a permit to build a hotel on top of our ivy kupuna. Thank you very much. I hope you will entertain making a motion. Thank you.
Mahalo. Mahalo, Claire. Uh, we don't need a motion for that, but, um, Chair, maybe you can talk to Kamakana, who can help you write that letter. You're familiar with-
I would like to talk to someone from legal, if you don't mind.
Well, he can interact with, uh, we have only one legal person in, in OHA. So when they tell you they're busy, they're crazy busy. So if we can have Kamakana meet with you and say exactly what you want done, and maybe we can do that.
Yeah, Claire, this is, uh, probably for our advocacy team. We have, um, Lena Ala Lay. She's a licensed attorney, and she can work with Kamakana and work with you. Our legal team, what you refer to as our legal team, is literally one person, and it's under corporate governance law, not the type of specialty issues that you're talking about. But advocacy, Lena Ala, Kamakana, is probably the best suited for this, along with, uh, some of the relationships we have at NHLC. But thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
I see. So you don't want me to talk to her. Is that right?
No, we will connect you with Lena Ala, our advocacy team, and Kamakana. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Lehuah, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, we have one more person. We have, um, Robert Bobby Kanuha.
Aloha.
Hello. Hey, welcome to Maui. Uh, I try to be the best I can and gotta be hard. I don't like it, you know, keep them simple, keep them nice, keep them with a lot of, a lot of love. So the ivy kupuna, the thing, my theory is, this is my theory. Hawaiian homestead, one piece of land, make on graveyard, put a mortar on that land. And all the ivy that we find, construction people, I work on many sites all over, mostly in Hawaii, Polais, Schofield, and every place else. So I'm right there in the midst of the whole deal, is everything is scraping, slow, tedious. The bowls is just like unexploded onions. So everything's tedious work, real slow. Gotta be patient, the heat, and everybody from different part of the world, we're all working together in one site. So that's the only thing I can recommend, the ivy. And my parents, my great-grandparents, my grandfather, the stories come down to me is wherever they died, I swear they're in barrel. They buried them right there. Wherever they didn't walk, they buried them right there. Some ground's hot, some, some greens is shallow, some is deep. The only deep one will be on a beach, on a sand, in a dune. That's really easy. Just put them inside. And this is, and that's the truth, because I learned this from my dad, both parents. My last name is Kanuha, my mother is Anau'kua, I mean, you know, west to east. And the backside of Haleakala, that is where the transit from Big Island to Havi. Come from Havi and it comes straight across. If you look in Havi, Canai this side, Kaikenu this side, you can be straight across. I get friends living in Havi. My, my father, we have land mile marker thirty-seven. If you ain't couple store, you're ten minutes away from the house. So it's a couple hours coming out from that low, that's the last of the frontier. Off the grid is off the grid. Right after that, St. Joseph Church, no more county water, everything is. All your own spring water coming out of the mountain. I have experienced it from my father. I mean, it's just, the whole, actually, this is what I learned. I get kind of hard time, line up, in the backside. So it was easy, the corn is from line up, coming from the continent was easy for them to traverse. But they never knew that actually the backside of Haleakala, that's where everything, you're talking about Kalaniopu, Kahakili, the whole thing. Kahakili used to go Big Island, come back, nail some guys, and he'd come back tomorrow. So that's how the whole thing was. And like I said, about the ivy, the best way for doom, when you find them and whoever the archaeologist is, everybody gotta be together. Don't try, don't try to do anything, you know, sneaky, you know what I'm saying? And Hal Hamlet did a lot of, of coastal survey. And there's a lot of sites on the backside of Haleakala. I swear the, the gap, they call them the cloak. You look at them, it's a cloak. Let me see. And the backside over there, that's where we call mono, and so I go all the time. That was her place, her beach, no other area. So what I would say is easier, the ivy is, we need to treat them with respect and find one graveyard, which is Hawaiian homes or state land, make one place graveyard, and bury them over there. You, you know what I'm saying? It's not a difference if you do an animal and one human. You gotta know what you're looking at. You know what I'm saying? You could be tossing one human, but you know, I've seen this on sites many times. I, I see them right there. I'm right there. I'm digging in the trenches with them. I'm trying to put rocks back where the thing used to be. Ready, you can come over there, walk on side. I bet you that rocks was to be there. A thousand of years, all of a sudden you walk up, boom, you put them right in a spot.
So you have one minute left.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You have, you got a minute though. You can continue.
Okay. And Po'akula, I work on Po'akula. Good fella. They are big, gigantic plant over there. I do the hoop, walking on the ah, you know, the ah, the whole thing. Hard work. I mean, you know, bring your ugly shoes. You know what I'm saying? Bring your good shoes because it's gonna tear up your boots. So I take the good law there. Danny Noe sent eight of us to the bomb school, and I think your brother went with us. Busby, yeah? Is that? Are you on Busby?
I'm a hale.
Okay, no, sorry, sorry, sir. Anyway, I told one of the trustees, but anyway, we gotta do and treat the ivy with respect. I swear, because I get family on our property that I'm thinking how I'm gonna do them. I'm gonna do them with all respect, just my grand, tutu later, whatever, but I'm gonna do everything. I told my family, I said, I'm gonna do them. I'm gonna excavate everything but with respect between me and him. That's all. I don't need nobody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Let's do the right thing. That's all.
Okay. Aloha. Lehuah, anyone else signed up?
No one else has signed up.
Okay, fantastic. Um, we're gonna now move on to announcements. Trustees, do we have any announcements? Okay, hold on. Uh, trustee Akina?
Just one announcement. Uh, if you're looking for the best pee pee stew on Maui, please see Carmen Hulud Lindsay, our former chair, who provided such wonderful hospitality to us here. Mahalo.
Mahalo, trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa.
Aloha. Um, I wanted to, um, give an update of what's, um, transpired recently. So the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, what if Trustees Committee on Budget and Finance, uh, BNF, as we call ourselves, will be, um, moving its previously scheduled BNF committee meeting on, that was scheduled for Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM to present the BNF Committee's recommended fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven by NAOM budget for board approval, and here's why. Yesterday, Governor Green signed SB one six five five one into law as Act one six nine, which requires board packets to be posted to at least three full days, full business days before a public meeting. Normally it's two, but now it's three. Therefore, the law also requires boards to provide notice to persons who have requested notification of meetings at the time the board packet is made available for public inspection. As such, the BNF Committee is building in additional time for agenda language and board packet materials to be completed, compiled, and published in conformity with the new law. The BOT meeting, scheduled for Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM to approve fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven, OHA budget remains the same. Should you have any questions or any additional information, please contact the Board of Trustees Chief of Staff, Summer Silva, at summers@oha.org. Mahalo, everyone. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Trustee Akaka, the announcements. Or trustee Galatera? Trustee Akaka.
Mahalo. Um, myself, as well as our Maui trustee, will be heading to Vakini Kona, to Washington DC, to attend and participate in the annual Kamehameha Ekahi celebration with lei draping. And that will be scheduled for the eighth of this week. And, um, I as well will be attending the Hawaii on the Hill and Vakini Kona to follow that. And also to note that joining us will also be our High Lama Farden, who'll be, um, attending and accompanying us as well, Protapal.
Trustee, you have anything? Trustee Galatera?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to, uh, share with the board and, and our beneficiaries that yesterday, Kapoana, Stacy Furra, and myself, we attended a, a, uh, well, it was a three-day conference, but we were asked to address the SHA, which is the Sovereign Council for Hawaiian Homeland Associations. And, uh, we wanted to impress upon them the need for working together with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and in what capacity, uh, that happens. And as we put it metaphorically, everybody has a place in the canoe. Some are more nimble than others, but we do want to, uh, assert ourselves so that there is a good working partnership with, uh, any and all entities on behalf of our lahu'i. So we feel as if we did, uh, uh, share information that was both ground game information, which is basic money matters, and then the thirty thousand foot matter, which is everybody working together. So I think it was very successful. We started off with, uh, I think some hesitance on the part of the, uh, the conference, but after we were done, uh, there was a rousing round of applause for what could be a very, very meaningful relationship between the two entities. So I just wanted to report that to the board. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, trustee Galatera. You know, finally, we just want to mahalo all of our trustees for traveling to Maui, as well as our Maui community beneficiaries for spending time with us. Again, we want to mahalo Louis, uh, Hok'ana, and the University of Hawaii at Maui team uh, for always, uh, sharing your aloha with us and allowing us to use your facilities. Also want to mahalo our hardworking staff, uh, that put all this work together behind the scenes. Uh, we sincerely appreciate your hard work and looking forward to going to Molokai next week, uh, for our Molokai, uh, site visits. And again, mahalo to our beneficiaries for coming to our meeting and for sharing your mana with us. Okay, yeah. Trustee Akaka? Okay, yeah, trustee Akaka.
Mahalo. I also want to say again aloha to Anakala Bob Lindsay, who has served as Hawaii Island trustee for many years. It was an honor to serve with him at the Board of Trustees, and it was confirmed to me after this meeting by his ohana that he had waha'aoia. And I just want to say, send our aloha and pule to him, and our sincere aloha to his ohana and those that have worked with him through the years. And mahalo him and his ohana and his team for all the many good things that they've done to fulfill our mission at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and to Malama, our beloved Hawaiian people.
Thanks, trustee Akaka, and that's a great segue into how we're gonna end this Board of Trustees meeting. And that is by honoring former chairperson of the Board of Trustees, Robert K. Lindsay Jr., affectionately known as Uncle Bob, who was a respected native Hawaiian leader, who faithfully served as the Hawaii Island trustee on the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board from 2007 until his retirement in November of 2020. He was initially appointed to the position following the passing of trustee Linda Dela Cruz, and he was subsequently elected to continue his service to the Lahu'i. Before his tenure at OHA, trustee Lindsay had a diverse and distinguished career dedicated to public service and land stewardship. He worked as a National Park Service ranger and served in the Hawaii State Legislature during the early 1980s. Later, he became the land assets manager for Hawaii Island at Kumehehmeha Schools Bishop Estate. At the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, trustee Lindsay's held several key leadership roles, including chairperson of the board, chair of the Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment Committee, as well as the Resource Management Committee. His leadership was grounded in empathy, cultural wisdom, and an unwavering commitment to the well-being of native Hawaiians. Trustee Lindsay's aloha for the community extended far beyond his official duties. He served on the boards of Habitat for Humanity West Hawaii, the West Hawaii Mediation Center, and Kanu Okaaina's Learning Ohana. His deep sense of kulianna guided his lifelong dedication to uplifting Hawaii Island communities and protecting the rights and welfare of the native Hawaiian people. Trustee Lindsay will be remembered for his steady leadership, his humility, and steadfast commitment to the native Hawaiian community. His approach to governance emphasized listening, compassion, and thoughtful decision-making. And he leaves behind a legacy of servant leadership that continues to inspire those who follow in his footsteps. So on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees, we send our deepest aloha, our love, and our condolences to Auntie Kathy and trustee Lindsay's beloved sons, Malu, Lono, and Imiola. Imiola, excuse me. May they find comfort in the lasting impact of his work and their enduring love of his community. And so trustees, I'd like to ask that we adjourn our Maui Board of Trustees meeting on a rising moment of silence for former chairperson of the Board of Trustees, Robert Lindsay, who has now gone to his creator. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Seconded?
Seconded.
Lehua, can you call the roll?
Trustee Ahunee is excused, trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzan is excused, trustee Wahee is excused, Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
We have six yes votes, we are...
Can we all rise to remember trustee Bobby Lindsay?